Thank you. We're gonna open up the, uh, the public hearing on the operating budget and we'll, uh, take any comments that's appropriate.
Do you have anyone in the room?
Is there anyone up, nowhere around? Anybody wanna make a comment that advises how to expense money? You, or review the budget about a half an hour.
Just for a point or two. Do we get a little presentation, a little bit for the public on this? Or not?
What public?
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I mean, that's a good question.
It's been available.
Yeah, it's been made available and, uh, we went through it last month. General giving, so.
Uh, you could give a presentation if you want. Give us some time.
So who wants to open it up? I got one question. What do we do with that nine hundred seventy-two thousand dollars?
I got an answer.
Good, that's what I wanted.
That was money that FEMA has reimbursed us. We didn't get it all at once. We got it over the course of since that storm. And, uh, as I understand, the last number was we've been reimbursed, got our final payment, uh, to reimburse the general fund that we've used to pay for expenses after the storm. Um, and I think it ends up that what FEMA reimbursed us was everything except about eighty-one thousand dollars, I think. So eighty-one thousand dollars is what that storm cost. So, so that money, it's not like we got a check and has Kim O'Connell's name on it then.
Okay.
And I could not find that in the paper.
It's on our website, right? That's my name. Cause otherwise it's got that, then it goes back to October, uh, twenty nineteen, there's some other stuff, so.
I know we have.
There's only two things on the website that I can find that were the last three years.
Well, been around for half hour. This is typical, actually. I'm being the same.
He has a quirk in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Little lined up some entertainment.
Doing it right now. And.
And where's Brad?
He's late. He said he.
Oh.
Something.
I think she's online. Amy's on, Amy's on.
Amy got the bit.
Yeah, she's here.
I'm right here. I can hear you guys.
Yeah, we done Johnny and get into.
Sorry, previous. Comfort like bruised. A little mess. I have the little. Cheap, cheap, but I mean, I. So they come up. You in the forty-five. Thank you. I haven't got a guy coming. First of all, this is that page on COVID. It's, uh, so the energy, so the. Definitely think, yes. So good. And then just nobody takes, they don't. You know, cause it didn't say any different. I, yeah. So. It's a doodle. Or no, it was something. But that door. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. She's, um, she says Navy, not college, right? Yeah, so she's, she's all a conversion. Her own. I can't make, I can ask it. Yeah. Pudge. He, he. That's, yeah. I've got these. The only reason I get a check. I got, okay, so. Little guy.
I, youngest brother. Maybe.
Yes.
I didn't really.
Areas. He got mine.
No.
She called and so. She said, I'm a lady. I have my.
Yeah, I love what they.
Water.
Different one.
And you couldn't be, you know, and you couldn't be around with it, you know, just drop like. Drop. Oh, my God. What's that? So I, I really did go. I was speaking to my brother. High school friend. I was. Well, that's the idea. So a lot of, you know, I enjoy my brother. Which is always tense. And so. Still. Like. Can't go. I used to, I used to. Go on this last.
I don't.
We have the chance with the rest of the. One, I just. Dying. You could think. My diet. So, yeah. She was. But she has negative. Usually. We can't. We lost. If you're. Just. You know, and we. Very. We need to. Um. Have to decide. So that. Yeah. Oh. Well. Yeah. You know, I said.
Oh, very, yeah.
I am. So the question of ours is. Ever. Sixty. Remind me of the years. So they're still. Got it. Uh. They have to talk. Fairly. Really. He said he should. I know. You over the.
Hard to say well back in my. God. I just didn't know my brother. I was an idiot. He was so young. Yeah. Talked about all the.
Back. Yeah. Nice. The world is raised and all of us.
And, yeah. Gives them all the.
But, yeah. That's right. So I was. Yeah. So there's. Come to the Santa Claus. I hope my. Friends. Yeah, we. I was hoping I can. October. How old? That's the play. And so she. Oh.
Right, uh.
I'm. Listen, you. Fair. So I told her. Yeah. I think that's.
I left. I left there.
Yeah.
I just.
Yes. Oh, this.
Sorry.
And it's just. Yeah. I was going. I. Yeah. Like, they don't have. There's some. So. They're. Oh, my. Kids doing. Yeah, I was so. And I called. Yeah. I'm sure. Otherwise. Like that. Yeah. I was like. They shared like. Down. Better day. And not really. Trying to. So. Their. I was. That's. Like. Superbowl. Five. Checking out and sleep under. Yeah. So we. People. Matter. That. Um. This is. I'm. See that. This. What's. Well. This. Yeah. This one. It's. Yeah. It was. That's why. It's been. I didn't. Some of that. We had. We're going. There. All the. You know, that was. Yes, you know. And. There. Oh, yeah. I think. You know.
I.
Oh, I. I'm just glad, actually. From. My doctor. For.
I. The. Hasn't. So. Just. Everyone else was. Yeah. I don't. Obviously. I think. And the.
I'm. I'm. So I think. I have. But it was. They. Feel like. And. And. That's. I'm. There's. I watched. And I don't follow it. And I'm. We're. So. I'm. Very. Think. So. Really. Yeah. We look. So. I was. We don't. And I. I think. I think. It's. Right. This. Was. You know.
Yeah. Well.
Start. You. So. Uh. That one. About. That was. I. Yeah. It's. I'd say.
Save.
Warnings. They called us all.
You know. Here.
Oh. For shit about. They. They're all. Uh, and everything else is so much. They think. I was. I was. Yeah. So maybe people need to change. The. First. I like. But. A lot of them. I don't have. I don't. They.
One S three.
That's from. I think. Everybody. I got out. Yeah. Why? I don't. I can't. Cause we. Do a lot of people. Cause we. Would. Like. After. So.
Definitely.
So. I. Yeah. We. Was. You know. Well, we don't know. That. Yes. I guess. I don't know. I don't. Well. I don't.
Well, we wanted to be up. You have. Almost. Ultimately. My. And. There's my.
Yeah.
That. I tried.
Yeah. So, yeah. I, uh. So. I made a.
Which did you like.
Actually. And.
As you go. Nobody is that. Nobody. That was. I must. I want to. Quickly. Because. I'm.
I stopped. I was. So. I'm. Sixty. In a. Mom. I don't. I don't. I never. I never. I take. That. We have. We asked. We. Like. We. 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 Place. And. Of course. You. So. I don't. You know. I'm. Do. Yeah. I had. Like. I remember. It's. It's. Something. Where. It's. But. You know. I think. But now. Even though. You know. I'm. I was. And you feel like. I'm. Like. It's. Yeah. I don't. You know. Yeah. I'm. I'm. So. I'm. Like. Um. I got. I'm. So. We have. We're. About. Now. We should. Be. So. So. And. So. Of course. It was. Well. I. 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 Who's. Talking. About. The. That. You can say. Whatever. Okay. Love. You. In the. So. Part of your. You know. And you. Bring. It's. My. Say. Miss. It's. Now. Then I. Call. It is. I'm. Not. Tell. We're. Small. And. So. Welcome. You. I. Did. Share. These. But I shouldn't. But. And. We. Wanting. You. Got.
Didn't. Like. Share. These. But I shouldn't. Thank you. But. You're. And. Let's. See. Those. That's. Like. The. World. That. We. All. It's. Yeah. Not again.
That's right.
She. This. Part.
And.
Also. Billy. And that's.
With. That was. Yeah. Cause I say. I like. Obviously. They have. And. We. For. You don't think. I should. I'm. 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 You're. I'm. 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 I know. Something. He's. Oh, yeah. Like. For. I'm. We. Again. I mean. You're. Like. Yeah. Yeah. Down. That's. That's. Like. The. Yeah. I mean. I think. Like. It's. Uh. Tell. You. Got. The. Chat. But. You know. You know. It's. Going. I'm. I'm. So. Next. One. That's. Where. It's. Out. Of. Time. So. We. Actually. We're. Talking. Box. That. We. Everyone's. Coming. My. Didn't. Think. I was. I started. Thinking. My. Boss. Okay. If I. That. I. You. Jump. From. This.
With. Yeah. They. Don't. Apparently. You got. She didn't. Think. That's. It's. Like. Hold on. Like. I. You know. I. Call.
And. It's. It's.
They don't have mushroom.
Yes, it is.
Always. Get. Yeah. It's. Starting. It's that way.
Yeah. Try to get. Try to. That. You know. Like. So. It's. That's. It's.
Those.
And. Maybe. I don't want. I think. I want to be. Detroit. But. I. I. So. You know. Talking. About. I'll tell you. Nobody. Shall. Take. All. That. So. Yeah. I would. Gosh. I saw. Yeah. I didn't. Step. So. He's. Going. I don't.
Mister Chair, Dr. Jake, can you hear me?
Yeah, John. Oh, yes. Yeah.
It'd be nice to have you, John. We're, we're just, uh, enjoying it. Waiting. I hear a lot of chit chat. That's good. Want to entertain us for a while? Yeah, I should be on now for the whole meeting.
Yeah.
No, there's no.
Be real good.
It'd be nice.
This is already.
Do you think so? Well, I was born in the pride that I.
Yeah.
A lot of things. I mean, it's pretty quickly and I thought it was.
Yeah.
But I. I'm not just like.
I'm.
That's right. I'm right. How?
I'm saying I would take. I have this.
Yes.
You're like. We're. All through. All in. Different. Also, I'm doing something with you. It would be something. I don't know. You feel so much.
It is to see. And there's something there.
When you say. Now, I'm asking.
The one year. I'm. I'm.
You go get. Doggy. Oh, everything. You. Is he?
No.
What's the reason?
I'm.
And that'd be hard.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Really.
That. Finally. You know what's? That was just. Like some of those stuff. There's thirty. I was so. Channel. And they can actually.
Yeah, I don't watch. I mean, I see. Along the river. And there is. How? It wasn't like a little bit. How was this? I think that we're saying. You know, we totally don't. That's for.
Well.
Not.
Um.
Long. You know, what?
If it got.
Uh, one of the. House. And there's. So. Yeah. Well, it's just. Yeah. A lot of those. The joke. Jibobi.
I share.
People love. Yeah. Jay.
I don't. Yeah, I.
Is that one?
I.
And then, uh, when I. So. That's one of the facts. So. Well, I don't think. What do you? This is. What is? And I. Morning.
Yeah.
Well. Jay.
Oh.
It was like. Yeah. And then one of our. Ask camera. That um. That usually. One of the. But you can ask.
Of that. One.
We also.
You saw.
Like a.
And absolutely.
I mean, it was. And. So it wasn't.
That one.
This. Number. And then all going to. He was. Yeah.
But it was. We were. We were there to change. To the. That way. It was just at the start. Like. Mary John. Called her. She said. I just. Just don't. We just stopped. Mary John. And you look down. And away. It could be. That's. You know, I probably. That's really. I don't need that as well. And I mean, they have started all. Just. Holds everything down.
And let's.
Yeah. Why? I don't. It's. The. Buck. You're going to shoot it out. I mean, but. I can't say. Real. You know, it's going to jump. Get on a real straight. A lot of. I've been. Stayed. Right. And it's got. I don't. And I'm. Just has.
Yeah. I wanted to. Said. He on two windows.
So like. It's just. I'm. I'm. I guess we could handle. At first, they called it. In. There. There. That's just. It's. It was. Good. It was next by. I mean. Dollar. Let's. Try. And. Probably. And then. It's. Okay. But. But. No. It's. Still. And I'm. We're. Right. If it's. Any. Like. But. I mean. The. But. It's. Then that's. The other. Actually. That's. We should. I had. I guess. It's. Like. I worked at. A. We. And. And. Put. Back. Now. Put shit. Same. As. Two. Because. Right. As. I'm. Here. We started. Here. We started. Here. We started. I. I'm. The. Original. Because we had. For last. I didn't. I didn't. Right. He has. Agents. So. That. He's. Like. Exactly. What you're talking about. It's. It's kind of. The. Well. It's. Such a. Chief. So. Third. This. Chief.
Because it's. That. Avenue.
So. Well.
Yeah. I'm. And.
We. We did. Change. Here. And. Yes. Worded there.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah. This is. Every. Done. The. Should. Especially. I didn't. It's. The. Part. Uh. It's. That's. That's. So. I don't. Right. So. This. They're. Just.
The. I'm. Now. I'm. I didn't. I didn't.
Well.
I can.
Oh. It's. I just. You.
Yeah. We did. Have. You. I mean. Pretty. Much. trouble. You. My. Size. And I mean, they. You don't want to. Go. I would. So. This. We. Change. Part.
And. That.
When we. Come. Down.
It was. And. I don't. Know. It's. It's. I love. That. We. Change. About. Often.
Put on his. Driver. There. There. And. Three. You know. What's happening? Definitely. They. Were. Stupid. Cali. Something. What? All of those cities. Exactly. How many? What? Stats. Eighty-one. See. And. Then. All. Comes. It was. Sure. I. Show. I. I. Okay. I. And. And I will know. I'm. During. The story. But. It wasn't. Part. Of. Nothing. I said. Because. We. What? We did. Which. So. We didn't. Up. To. The. Say. Things. Was. All. And. Some of them. Talking. To. We. We did. Put. The. How. Mentioned. It. There. Like.
Thanks.
And. Doesn't. Okay. I don't. Why. I don't. Why. I don't. I do. Just.
And. Have. That's.
And. Those. Are. They. They. No. Even. It was. Yeah. And. I thought. It's. On. It's. Look. That one is. That. Sure. Thing. It's. So. I don't. Change. Through. The. Right.
That's.
No. They. They. Yeah. Oh. Yeah.
Of course. I. Didn't want to. Get. That. So. Then. We see. That. It's. Well. There. It's. That's. How.
Their. Night. Was. Two. Where. It's. On. With. Our. The. Stars. It's. We. We. Also. We're. Just. Very. Very. And. Yes.
This. Yeah. That. It was. Very. One.
And. That. Too. That. Has. This. By. Yes. By eleven. And. Then. It's. Got. It. Lost. Off. My. Red. Wonder. But. I asked. How. You. That. It's. A.
She's. Very. Good. Like. And. You. What? And. We. Just. Time. You know. Being. There. You. Fuck. You're.
Oh. We. You. All. Really. This.
Where. I'm. 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 Right.
We. You. Got. You. Bottom. Line. Nothing changed. So. Budget. Now. Except. For the. One. Pen. From. That. But. We did. We're not backing this. Budget. By. The. Dollars. Where. I mean. I. Dollar.
Yeah.
I guess. We can. Do. We. As. Well. The. Partner.
That's. That's.
Somebody's. Maybe. The only. Way. Here. But. It's. On. That. We. Uh. One. Minute. Parking. Rooms. No. This. Is. A. True. But. Are these not? So. But. Yes. I don't. Want to say. You're. A. Nation. The. Uh. And. And. Green. And. Plaza. Because. Always. Been.
Well. Yeah.
Yes. I'll. Be. So. Yeah. Nineteen. Ten. Or. Think. Of. December.
Must be. Close. To. Six. And. Five. Is. Why? They're. Doing. You know. I.
Yeah. You stand. More. A day.
That is. A. Day.
Like. One.
Fifty-nine. Y'all.
Oh. Second. Job. Yeah. Okay. I'm. Okay.
Okay. That's. Well. Uh. We need. A. Motion. Close. The. Uh. Public. Hearing.
I think. Motion. To. Close. Public. Hearing.
Got a motion. To. Close. The. Public. Hearing. And. Second.
Second.
Second. About. Yeah. What's your name? Yeah. But. Sid. Right.
You're. Right. By. The. Principal. I'm.
Turn. Turn. Your. Brother. All. In. Favor.
Bye.
I. Okay. Thanks. Well. We're going to call. A. Six. O'clock. Meeting. To. Order. Need. Mean. The. Uh. Receipt. Of. Evidence. In. This. Pretty. Hot. For. Motion.
We'll. Read.
Uh. The County Board of Supervisors. November fifteenth. Meeting notice. And amended agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places. Posted on the county website on November eleventh. And was sent to the newspaper the week of November seventh. In addition, on Friday, November eleventh. The Office of the County put distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors, media, and or email.
You have a counselor on?
Behind you, Jay.
Okay. How does that sound to you?
It. Complies with the open meetings law.
Okay. We'll. Uh.
Staff changes in salary. I know Vince said it's in the budget, but really where does that money come from? Is it, I mean, if it wasn't in the budget before, how do we get it back in the budget now? I don't know, maybe that's my lack of budgeting, but it's gotta have come from somewhere. So those are my two questions. Thanks and I'll unmute.
Regarding the line quarry, there is not a specific line item in the budget for the line quarry. Rather what we did was we, when we sold the line quarry at about one and a half million, we earmarked it or designated that money to be spent on parks and trails, you recall. So that is actually that money is in the general fund, but it's kind of just earmarked or designated for that. We do have quite a bit of that money left over because we have many projects, but we were just starting them or we haven't spent that money yet. But yet, so we're carrying that money over to 2023 and we'll use that money, all of it, for parks and trails. Did I answer that question? Okay. Secondly, regarding the step increases, yeah. It, we, we had accounted for those increases in the budget, but what we neglected to do was, uh, and so we had this firing, the money for those increases all included in the budget. But what we didn't do is keep track of them adequately and report to all of the different committees, the exact number of who was getting that credit. So once we saw the number seven and then nine and then 11, you know, we realized technically it's not a big deal. I don't think in terms of the money doesn't change. But, and you know, I'm not sure that we had, you know, one of those things that were required to point out at budget time, but we just wanted to be open and say, actually, we had 11 as opposed to what we had originally said. So the money was already in there. We just didn't designate it and tell each of the committees.
Anna Fred?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have anything in reference to the budget?
And we'll say, it kind of back up what the staff has been incredible, you know, we've had some changes and, and Don and Sherry and the staff and everybody pitched into division, the art division directors and their staff. Uh, I think we got this out sooner than ever before. And we learned a lot, you know, every time you do it with different people, you go through changes. So I just want to thank everybody again for all their hard work.
Hey, need a motion on the resolution forty-seven twenty-two?
Mr. Chair, I believe we've always had a roll call vote on the budget.
Second.
You make a motion?
He made a motion, made a roll call vote on the budget.
I made that motion.
I think that's what he tried to say.
I'll second it.
There is a motion to adopt the budget uh, resolution forty-seven twenty-two by a roll call vote. Motion made by Johnny and seconded by
One.
Okay. We got it. All, uh, roll call.
Okay. Must start with Amy Middleton?
Uh, yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Wes Arkham?
Yeah.
CJ?
Yes.
John Bonnaprise?
Yes.
Brett Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
Steve Wondell?
Yes.
Ryan Wood?
Yes.
Tracy Duff?
Yes.
Dan Ruff?
Yes.
Barbara McAfee?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly? Tim O'Connell?
Yes.
Yes. Hey. That was, uh, updating our government project.
Guys, welcome over here. Uh, I handed out an update on the government center project. It's moving along. Uh, today we fired up the boilers, uh, to try to get some radiant heat, heat in the building. Uh, the air handlers, it lifted up on the roof, uh, tomorrow, sixteenth. Uh, so that's moving along. Uh, we're on schedule looking at a punch list item for minor things. Uh, December twentieth, we're walking around, start looking at items. Still have long lead times on the generator, uh, the card, uh, card swipe reader boards. On those, still working on getting the glass in and the door locks and your hardware on also. So we're moving along. Um, it's moving quite quickly right now, but, um, things are on track.
Do you have any questions in reference to the, uh, project?
Sure. How about some numbers here? How far off are we?
Numbers off?
How far off are we? How much action is it?
Uh, we're still at two to three percent. We're about two hundred and forty-nine thousand over. What's projected, we've had some credits come in. We've had some change orders come in for the largest one that's come in so far was additional, uh, door hardware lock pack devices pushes. Then the next one, we've had credits come in, smaller credits, maybe six thousand, seven thousand for not removing concrete pad or eliminating a chain link fence around the chiller and stuff like that, but we are both trending, um, on our estimate currently.
Yes, we spent the contingency, didn't we?
Right. We're about two hundred and forty-nine thousand over, three eighty-five. Yep. And that was in the original budget, um, with that, but we're, um, still at two, around two forty-nine, two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, still holding what we can in this economy with the increase of product and stuff, but, um, we're still holding tight on it.
Who else have anything? Well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. I'm understanding the discussion on the, uh,
Okay, uh, little status update, Amy Peterson, uh, I think the minister tonight is currently filling in, uh, as clerk until the board appoints a new one. Uh, she's assisted by Katie Schultz, who is the newest deputy clerk. We have also Anna Smith, who was working in the, uh, yes, there at the entryway is helping out. They did a great job with the election last. Uh, they had a couple other people help out. Uh, Lisa Ross came back and helped out and, and the election went very well. Uh, we have had, I think, seven applicants for the clerk's position. We've narrowed that down to four. This Thursday, uh, those four candidates will zoom in to the, a special executive committee meeting to let them, uh, answer some questions so that we can compare people side by side. So that will happen this Thursday. And then once the executive committee, if they, assuming they come to a, a recommendation, they will recommend it, that person. And we'll present that to the board next month and the board decides who the clerk will be. Uh, I would like to take just a minute though, because not only do these people have to learn on the fly, uh, how to be clerks, deputy clerk, how to run an election and a canvas and all of that, uh, but we also had a pipe break in the clerk's office. Whole project and, uh, Amy, I gotta give her credit. When I got that call, she sounded like it was Houston calling, you know? Stay calm, everybody. We got it under control. But, uh, she had a lot of help and I, I just, Dave Ballendorf, Anna Smith, Katie Schultz, Gail Wassberg from our veterans office, Shelley Stowell, uh, Lisa Ross, Sharon Jorgensen, Mike, Chris and maintenance. Mo, you give them a pat on the back. Mo, Norby, and then Officer David Vincent provided security. So, uh, I, I tell you what, it's, it's a good feeling to know when you have staff that, uh, they pull together when you need them and, and they all did that. So hats off to them.
Good, thank you. Number eleven. Oh, back up to ten. Jay, go ahead. So as the whole county board is not going to get to know who the four finalists are and will only hear the name of what executive brings to us?
Yeah, I didn't want to, uh, I don't know that it's appropriate for me to, to like name the four people now, simply because, uh, you know, they may have other jobs, you know, they probably don't want us announcing in a public meeting, you know, here are the people running for it and, and that type of thing. Um, what we could do, you know, if it
Any member of the county board that wishes to attend and listen and participate in the interviews that are scheduled in front of the committee can certainly come and do that or watch. Um, by, by Zoom, we can make sure that they are panelists. If they wanted to get that additional information.
But if you recall, it was decided that the executive committee last month, they said they, they would review them and then make a recommendation. That's the, the process we're going through.
Anything else on the appointment?
Vince, what was the date of that special meeting?
This Thursday.
This Thursday?
After tomorrow.
Is it nine o'clock?
Uh, yes, I believe.
I believe it's nine o'clock.
Is that twenty? Okay, now. Okay. Uh, discussion regarding a divisional utilization of this whole information platform, IP, uh,
You know, you've heard Don talk about this, that he's kind of taking our, we have a new analytics person. We have each division which doing some important work. We thought rather than always report on CJCC every month like we were and get the same information, uh, we would take a different package and show what's happening in all the different divisions. That good, our director for information technology has done an amazing amount of work to bring our technology up to speed. And so he's presenting tonight's information regarding what they're accomplishing in that division.
Go ahead.
So, um, I have a pleasure about, uh, you, uh, what, uh, we've been doing, information technology, uh, to build this environment, uh, for the future of Polk County. Um, so we're really, we're, uh, we're building, building for the future, building value. Uh, you know, last month we brought in the, the, uh, new website. That's really to, um, put a modern look on Polk County. Um, we've had a, an old website, it's been around since about two thousand and eight. Uh, we really revamped that, made it look, uh, modern, gave it a really, uh, fresh appeal, uh, with information out there. Um, we've got the implementation of Microsoft three sixty-five, uh, we put all of Polk County on the same platform. Uh, previous to that, everyone was on a different platform, doing something different, different applications, things weren't compatible. Everyone has got the same unit. Uh, we've got DocuSign, uh, going into the new website. We're doing automation of forms, approvals, automation of approvals, the whole process. So we've got a workflow basically now. Um, and beyond that, we're eliminating servers. Uh, we're consolidating, um, really reducing our footprint. Um, and with all that, we're building resilience. Uh, this year we replaced all of our firewalls, uh, new, uh, new equipment and instead of just replacing the one, we've got two. Um, back in twenty twenty, we actually had a failure firewall and government center was down for, for a day. Uh, while we were waiting for new equipment. That won't happen anymore. Uh, we've also got redundant circuits at all sites. Same thing. If we, yeah, the site go down or, uh, circuit go down, uh, we won't have the, the site down anymore. We can go and fill over to another one. And lastly, we've also got a new disaster recovery platform that will, uh, allow us to lose all of our sites here and still be able to run. We'll still be able to have all of our systems running and be able to serve our, serve the public. In addition to that, uh, the, the new recovery platform that also has scanning for for malware, for ransomware. So we'll have a heads up before it actually is able to get, withhold. Now let's go into the security updates. Um, we've actually put a layer of approach into, in a place where we're utilizing artificial intelligence to alert us and really do twenty-four seven monitoring. Input into that is security operations center. And they, they're, they're monitoring what's being alerted from the artificial intelligence. So we've got new antivirus. That's the base platform. We've got network monitoring. We've got the artificial intelligence inside the security operations center that will make sure we're aware and can respond to anything. On top of that, the artificial intelligence systems will actually respond to a lot of the, uh, issues that, that commonly occur. Someone's attacking us from outside, they can actually shut down those ports automatically and quarantine those systems off, off of the grid and we don't have to worry about it. We might have one system that we have to worry about, but we don't have to worry about the entire network. Um, going on from that, we've also got cyber hygiene monitoring, uh, which we get weekly reports on, daily reports if something comes up, but it's constantly scanning. And that's from the security, uh, cybersecurity infrastructure, uh, security agency. Um, in addition to that, we have successfully tested all of our defenses. Uh, we've, we've got another test coming up, uh, in December here, but we've got scanning for denial service tech. And we're, we're, uh, we're testing that with live testing. We're hitting our servers, seeing how they perform and seeing how our, our defenses are. The last test we had was successful. In addition to make security easier for, for our staff, we have a password, password manager that's been implemented, which will remove the need for spreadsheets of password. Uh, those are not secure. They're, they're, that's, they're sitting out there. They can be wrapped into a password manager now and securely shared between the staff and, uh, in those instances where they need, preferably they have their own accounts, but always, there's always an exception. And lastly, the data analysis. We had a new function where we, we hired, uh, that member called Abigail, Abigail Paulson, and she's done a great job, um, getting the ground running. Um, we really focused this position on taking the data that we have and integrating that together to build dashboards, this, this, um, you've all seen what, what's been done with the CJCT, uh, statistics, but that's really what we're trying to do across all departments. Uh, we're, we're really looking to see where we can add value, where we can get, um, more transparency, where we can, uh, really build better systems and better analytics. Um, right now we've got ongoing projects with line information, Gabriel Health, Public Health, ADFC, and there's more coming today. The big ones, like I said, CJCC, uh, we did streamline some, uh, tracking processes for veteran services. Um, and IP has really taken, um, taken a lot of the, uh, statistics and dashboards, um, and, uh, really, uh, dashboards here. And I actually have a couple examples here. And one, I, one thing that's, that's really interesting and I, I think is, is a, is a great add-on here is these aren't just reports. These are interactive dashboards that you can interact with. There, you can select different, uh, uh, different months, different years, and even drill down into some of the, uh, some of the charts. So it's anonymized, uh, data, but, and so it's here, but it really, will really give you a better idea as to what this data really means. And in here is just a, a taste of the, of what, uh, what IT has been doing this year. And so we've, uh, we've actually completed four thousand and eight work orders this year. That of, uh, of around six, seven, the average job per year, um, with a ninety-seven percent SLA. And what that means is in general, um, those four thousand and eight, uh, work orders were completed within plan business day. So I, while we've stayed at ninety-seven percent, our goal's ninety-five, so we're well above that. And it's been, it's been a great year for us. Um, and even beyond that, we've seen a decline. Uh, two years ago, we had five thousand work orders. Um, we got forty-five hundred this year. We're on track to beat the four, or four thousand this year. Forty-five hundred last year. We're on track to beat that. Um, so it's, it's great. And while, while those work orders are going down, we have seen a tremendous amount of and seeing those go down instead of up, uh, during all of that change is really refreshing, but allows us to rather than focus on problems, we can focus on anything. Any questions?
Bert, yeah, it's interesting.
How much of this? The talent that you have for this as resident in the county versus like third party, uh, like outsourced, yeah, outsourced or cloud-based management of these things?
Um, well, we have, all of our staff are here. Um, we, are you talking about the security operations staff?
Just, yeah, just all the, I mean, all the, the cybersecurity monitoring and all that. Is that third party or, or do we have a role to play in that organically here within the county?
That's both. So we do have expertise in, in-house. We are actually developing more in-house. Um, so the, the, the real my, the, my tenure here has really been focused everything on cybersecurity. We're, we're not building anything without that as a primary goal. So, um, it's something that we've, we've developed. We didn't have it right away, um, but we do complement that with third party.
And as far as our data goes, is that all resident on servers within the county or is, is most of that cloud based?
We've got, um, we've probably got seventy-five percent on, on servers within the county and twenty-five percent is in, in cloud based.
You have a sort of a vision thing of how that's going to end up? Are we, are we always going to have some or are you looking to migrate most of it to something external?
We are, we're doing an assessment on what we can, what we should migrate, what we can. Um, but I will say that we will likely always have something that's, that's here, um, just inherent to the data, especially procedures requirement map.
Is there the reduction in work orders? Is that just kind of luck of the draw? Is there education that's happening with county employees or is there anything more that can be done? You guys keep seeing work orders go down and keep being able to do the stuff that you'd rather be doing?
Yes. Uh, so a lot of the, a lot of what we're doing is, is actually educating. Uh, we've actually had a large focus on educating our, our staff in, um, things like the Microsoft three sixty-five. And I think a lot of those work orders are really, the reduction is because they're on standard platforms now. We, we actually have management of the machines. We have everybody really standardized across the board. Um, the other side of it is, uh, going into more education, we actually have a, a new, um, a new product that we are starting to, uh, put out for people that they can take courses at their own, um, at their own pace. And it's really focusing on those, those, uh, those Microsoft products. Thank you.
Who else? Well. Confirmation of appointment, I know. None at the time. Do you have any?
I have one to the, uh, aging and advisory committee, Jan Carlson. Have been nominated and I've brought her to you. Uh, she's a resident of Osceola. And, uh, she's involved in, uh, interface caregivers of Polk County Board and also a board member of endeavors. Uh, she has a, a desire to work with, uh, the staging advisory committee. And I've talked with the ADRC folks, they're all on board. So I just ask that you all, uh, nominate her or approve, approve her.
Okay. You need a motion to approve the appointment?
I move for a nomination of Jan Carlson.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I really don't have anything to, to announce yet. I'll have it already. We had a prize up for the last month at least, maybe longer. Well, the supervisor, if you had anything you'd like to add to this?
Thank you. Well, you've heard about the status of the clerk's office. Uh, also, uh, we are, we have accepted and, and evaluated applications for the human resources director, which is the new position we've created. Uh, the structural change is important because it's going to allow us to do some of the things that we think are very necessary. Uh, to have someone with the, uh, position, the authority to look at things like our performance appraisal process, the, uh, wage study and how we implement our pay system in the future. Uh, as well as the resolution that this board passed regarding, uh, developing some type of bonus structure based on performance. Uh, and so that's something that, that we'll be interviewing later this week and then finalizing hopefully the next week too. We've got a few good candidates there. Um, Gandy Dancer, uh, trail feasibility study. I know Bob has been working on this. We have a consulting company, SRF, who has started the feasibility study. Now, it's only the feasibility study, but they are looking at a path uh, to connect, uh, St. Curry Falls with Burnett County or other user groups, uh, that are, uh, equestrian and ATV, T, ATV, UTP. Uh, they are, you know, it sounds like a very impressive group. They've done experience in these types of things. What I'll tell you is, is that they started mapping things out, looking at alternatives, looking at challenges. And in the next few months, they'll be bringing things together. And in the early part of next year, they'll be holding stakeholder hearing sessions, public hearing sessions. We'll be presenting environmental services and a board update on that. Uh, housing, uh, interesting topic, one of interest to all of you. And last month we talked about it. We continue to talk about it over the course of the month. So the other day in general government, uh, it was decided to put together kind of a working task force to look at this important topic. To say, what are some of the other counties doing? Uh, what are some alternatives or some plans? What might work to help generate apparently things around workforce housing? But we'll look at all types of housing. So I'll and my staff will be putting together this task force. If you have special interest in this, I know a couple of you do already and have been active in it. Uh, we'll include some, some people will work with the communities in our county because it, we've got to have buy-in from people. Uh, and I will be reporting to general government on this each month and then, you know, as we make progress for this committee as well. Um, an update on the fair society negotiations at the executive committee, we heard from, uh, the attorney for the fair society. And it was decided we're going to meet, uh, the fair society and our board will meet, uh, to discuss the development of an MOU, uh, tentatively. And I don't have confirmation yet. I think they're going to meet on December eighth. And the update on the Stauer litigation, really have none, except all arguments for one of the cases, you know, involving the DNR have been heard. So the judge now needs to decide on whether or not he'll dismiss that. Basically, we're kind of in a holding pattern, moving slowly, uh, but we continue. That's all I
That's it? Supervisors, anybody have any announcements or meetings in the prime of the that are ready? There's none. I'm going to call for, uh, the next citizen adjournment on, uh, make one of those. Well, the shortest budget meetings we've ever had. And I was wrong. Motion made by Sharon. Said by Josh, all in favor?